Thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate you attending. I apologize for the late start. We had a meeting prior to this that was livestreamed, so hopefully if you missed that, you can go back and watch it. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. And with that, we'll call this meeting to order. Ask Pastor Steve Adamson from the Maricopa Community Church, please come forward and give us an invocation. Steve, you'll be sure to press that little button so the green light comes on. And after that, we'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Rich Vidieello, and we'd all follow him in that. So if you'd all please rise.
Yes, thank you for inviting me to pray with you tonight. It's one of the things I like to do most. So shall we? Our Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for a constitution that allows each citizen to believe and worship according to their own consciences. Please open our eyes to your eternal power and divine nature revealed in the Bible and also in your amazing creation. And we thank you also for opening our eyes to your grace, mercy, justice, and forgiveness revealed in the gospel. Please show us more of your special purposes for the city of Maricopa during this meeting, and help us not to lag behind in the things that you want us to do as a city. Please protect us from rushing headlong into anything that would be harmful or wasteful. And I pray for your wisdom for this council regarding everything in their stack of stuff for today, wisdom for those who bring the items to their attention. So we pray that your name would be hallowed, and your will would be done in Maricopa, so that everyone who comes here may be blessed with a peace with God that lasts even beyond this lifetime through faith in your Son, Jesus Christ, in whose name I pray. Amen and amen.
Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. That'll take us to the roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Councilmember Vidieello?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Next item. Sorry, dropping my mask here, which is part of the required costume now. We have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. If you're a small business owner, you're a member of the Chamber of Commerce, or anything else out there, would you please come up to the podium and meet us halfway here? And we'd like to do a proclamation for you. So please come forward. Come on up. Yes, we also have some small business owners on the council dais as well. Thank you all for being here tonight, and so many more that are out in the area of the city. We certainly have a great appreciation for our businesses, large and small, and everyone in between. But this is a wonderful time of the year that as we move into the holiday season, as we're thinking a little bit less about ourselves and a little bit more about others, we really like to try and focus and give extra attention to those small business owners that work so hard to help the economy and community go around. So with that, whereas the city of Maricopa celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the U.S. and are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. That's pretty important. Whereas small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the private sector in the U.S., whereas on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants, 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small business as part of their holiday shopping. Whereas the city of Maricopa, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as the public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the city of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Maricopa, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So again, many thanks, huge applause, and congratulations to these folks. Good morning.
It's the squinting of your eyes. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Go ahead. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that'll take us to a report from the mayor and the city council. City council, anything that this time you'd like to share with? I think of Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Wade so far. So please, go ahead and start.
Last Tuesday, October the 10th, we had a PICWA board meeting, which was the ongoing study of what's going on with the DWR and the Pinellas County Water folks, farmers. The history of this is that in 10 years, the farming community in Pinellas County will no longer receive CAP water, so that the assured water supply will be in question. Whether they will, those farmers who plan to continue farming will either have to dig deeper, relocate, or stop farming. So our issue is with PICWA, the board I have on, Pinellas County Water Authorization Authority, we've contracted with the Matrix Engineering Firm to determine availability of water in Pinellas County for the farming community. I mean, at the first brush, it seems that we have a lot of brackish water available so far, but it's not very usable. At least, we're trying to determine just how usable it is. So it's just the first step. There are many more steps to come, and whoever replaces me will probably be able to give you that report. But it's a real issue in terms of assured water and availability of water. That's especially true for those farmers who tend to sell off some of their land for homing, fousing. Then you really would have to have a 100-year supply of water. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Wade?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all are aware, Veterans Day was last Thursday, the 11th. Prior to Veterans Day, there was a Veterans Day parade that took place, starting at COC, and then moving its way down to Legacy. And then also, there was a parade, a caravan, caravan, that took place from the Veterans Center through to Providence and back over to Providence, and then back over to the center. I'm trying not to become emotional now, because I got emotional during that caravan as we were traveling through Providence from the display of support and acknowledgement and love that came from the community towards the veterans on that day. And I know that we don't just use one day to support and recognize veterans, but that particular display on both days was phenomenal. And so I want to thank Gabby Potter and her team for the efforts of the caravan, and Joseph Harvey for his efforts for the parade, and his team for the parade. It was phenomenal. And I want to thank them for what they did as a veteran, as a council member, and as a citizen of the city of Maricopa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
It was a powerful couple of weeks. If you felt like you didn't have anything to do, I don't know where you were, because there was so much going on. We had the Sonoran Creek groundbreaking, phenomenal. That's going over by Culvers, where most of you are aware that that's going to be there, and there'll be a Sprouts and some other restaurants, and very, very exciting. We had Bahama Buck's grand opening. I actually missed that, so I had to go pay for mine. But man, let me tell you, it was delicious. And so go try that out over by Walmart if you haven't tried that yet. And then the Copa Film Festival was this past weekend, and some very delightful films that were involved there. I hope we all get another second chance at watching those, because I didn't get to see them all. But that's really good for Maricopa and for economic development and the art world in Maricopa as well. We also had the Relay for Life Survivor Celebration. It was a drive-through event held at the Auction Entertainment Center, and it was very delightful as well. So we had many survivors come through and receive a free lunch from Harrah's, actually prepared the free meals, and to celebrate their survivorship of cancer. So that was really exciting. And then, if you're not aware, a hospital's coming. So they broke ground, and oh my gosh, the whole community had an opportunity to participate. Next time they do something, go, because it was like first-class, top-notch, just an awesome event. And one of the good pieces of information that I received before I actually went to the second service was, we know that there are a lot of people who are worried about Medicare, and they indicated that they will be going through the process. As soon as they open, they have to be open to go through the process to certify to actually accept Medicare. So that should be an ease to a lot of the seniors. As to the timeline, they said they'd keep us informed and how long that's going to take after they open. But another piece of information I picked up was, and I need to know a little bit more about this, so, you know, we all should take it for what the person said. But evidently, because they're classified as an emergency room, they have to take all insurance if it's an emergency. So that's good news as well. So we need to learn a little bit more about that as well, and I asked them for some clarification on that. But those are all interesting things, and people are really wanting to know more about that. And then the poetry slam, oh my goodness, if you've never been to a hugely creative poetry slam, you haven't lived yet, because there's some interesting ideas. But it was very successful, and I was one of the judges, and Councilmember Wade was as well. And we enjoyed doing it. We had a lot of fun. So lots to do, lots to experience in the city of Maricopa. So get out there. If you missed any of this, get out there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Gussi?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Wade had mentioned. We did celebrate Veterans Day last week. I wanted to remind everyone that veterans are still suffering and in crisis. According to Department of Veteran Affairs study conducted in 2016, 20 veterans commit suicide daily, not monthly, but daily. And per capita, our female vets are encompassing a large amount of those suicides. I urge the city of Maricopa to continue to work with our community partners, and I'm glad one of our partners are here to hear this presentation, to continue to work with our community partners in service of our veterans. I helped broker a program for our veterans through Global Water, and I urge this council to continue to do so. And if you wouldn't mind humoring me, if every veteran could please stand in this room? Remain standing. Remain standing. If I can have every family member, brother, sister, uncle, wife of a veteran, please stand. And lastly, if you support our veterans in this community and throughout this country, please stand. You can see, in this room, we have resources of community support for our veterans, and let's continue it. As you mentioned, let's continue it every day. Veterans Day should be every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Wade had another thing he wanted to talk about.
I apologize. It's something that I forgot, and it's very important, or else I would not have disturbed. We lost a very important person here in the city of Maricopa last week. And important, not because of importance, but important because they thought the community wasn't important enough to spend their time and their efforts developing programs and support to veterans because of who she was. Tracy Davis, and those of you who know Tracy know who I'm speaking of, was community. They did a memorial service for her on Sunday, and it was very well-attended, highly-attended. Tracy also was a co-founder of Blue Star Moms and was dynamite. She was dynamite. So again, recognition to Tracy. If we could just, for one moment, take a moment of silence to recognize a wonderful woman. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other councilmembers would like to go at this time? And just as a follow-on, Councilmember Brown had leaned over me and said that at the end of the study period, that they'll have an engineer come and present to the council on the outcome of the water study. So just wanted to echo that. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Anyone else at this time? Okay, yes, yes, sorry, Councilmember Manfredi.
I just know that next time, I want to go before Nancy, because she says everything, and it's just, I got nothing left. I got nothing left.
I'm gonna say anything.
Thank you.
I will echo that it has been a very busy couple of weeks. As you all know, we had an election two weeks ago, and, you know, whether you like the outcome or dislike the outcome, it really doesn't matter. What matters is that we have a wonderful ability to have a peaceful transfer of power, and that's a good thing. So if you participated in voting, again, my thanks to you. I think that's the way that we were able to have our voice represented and participate in government in this great country. With that, again, it's been just four weeks of one thing after another, meeting after meeting. I erroneously thought that things were going to slow down a little bit after the state of the city. Instead, I have had more sun-up-till-midnight back-to-back meetings and constituent meetings, and you name it. I just didn't think it was possible at this time of year, but especially without the travel schedule that we normally have. But it has certainly been the case. But many wonderful things are afoot in the city of Maricopa, and I'm very excited for the opportunities and the great things that are ahead. And so again, to just a couple of real quick comments, and I'll save this for two weeks from now, but we have two members of this council who will be leaving us, and they have given many, many years of service of their life. And unless you've been in this position, you typically don't know what it requires. And so to those individuals, I say thank you. Thank you for all that you've done, and for the people and efforts that you've championed, and it is a great honor to have served with you. And so I thank you. To the incoming councilmembers, I look forward to learning from you and serving with you, and all the things that you bring to the table on behalf of the constituency here, and welcome aboard. We'll see you all here in two weeks for that. At this time, before we move on, I erroneously kind of blew past one of the issues in the Proclamations, Acknowledgements, and Awards. It wasn't on the agenda, but it was behind the scenes, and that is, we have a quick report from Matthew, who is from the Girls and Boys Club, and so I wanted to make sure I got him into the report from the mayor here. He's going to give us a three- to five-minute short information update as to where the Girls and Boys Club of Maricopa is headed and how it's working, et cetera. Matthew, take it away.
Good evening. Come on. Okay, good. Good evening, Mayor Price, fellow councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. It is an honor and a privilege to be with you all, so thank you. We're excited. My name is Matthew Lindberg, with the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Sun Corridor, and we are excited to finally be in Maricopa. We, I had the opportunity to come speak before this council back in 2008. Councilmember Brown and I were discussing that before this started, and for a number of reasons, it just wasn't the right time at that point for us to expand. We reconnected with Mayor Price about three years ago, and we've been working with a number of people out in Maricopa since then to get this started. So a quick info on the Boys and Girls Club, if you'll bear with me. Our mission is to inspire and enable all young people to realize their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. I tell people, it is a tough time to be a child today. Excuse me. And we're excited that. Our formula for impact drives everything we do. We want to help young people achieve academic success, healthy lifestyles, excuse me, and good character and citizenship. And so we're excited to bring those things to Maricopa. Our organization was founded in 1998. Santa Cruz branch is our sixth club. Also have one in Arizona City and four in Casa Grande. We identified Santa Cruz Elementary School as our home last fall, and began working with MUSD personnel at that point to make this a reality. As we began working on this plan a year ago, certainly envisioned our first few months out here would look a little different than they have. We started developing our Maricopa Community Board last winter, made a public announcement that we were coming, actually, in this room in February. A number of our community board members are affiliated with the city of Casa Grande, or excuse me, city of Maricopa, like to recognize them tonight, thank them for their time and their efforts, Vice Mayor Nancy Smith, Councilmember Henry Wade, and Nathan Uliant. While we're talking about board members, Dennis Fitzgibbons was a board member of ours many years ago, and he's expecting me to make fun of him, I can tell by his face, but I'll go a different route. Our organization is better off because of our relationship with Dennis and his family and his organization. So thank you, Dennis. We have also borrowed Tina Vinucci as a board member as well, and so appreciate our relationship there. While I'm recognizing people, I also like to introduce Bella Miller. In the back, Bella is our unit director. She is a longtime Maricopa resident, has been working for Boys and Girls Clubs up in the Valley for the last 15 years, and we are excited to have her part of our team, and she's excited to be working for a Boys and Girls Club in her hometown. So we announced in February, as I mentioned, and then the pandemic hit. Fortunately for us, as we moved towards the summer, we had secured enough community support and developed enough partnerships here locally that our Board of Directors unanimously voted to not only stick to our opening timeline, but we moved it up to meet the demand and serve young people as they needed it. At the same time, we also changed our name from Boys and Girls Clubs of the Casa Grande Valley to Boys and Girls Clubs of the Sun Corridor. That may seem like a small thing, but we wanted our message to this community to be that we value and we want our name to represent every community that we're in, and feel that Sun Corridor does a much better job of that than Casa Grande Valley did. Throughout the summer, we worked with MUSD to build our opening plan, and after years of planning, we opened with an all-day relief program on August 10th. We operated this free program for six weeks until in-person learning began on the 21st. We know that our work in Maricopa is a marathon and not a sprint, and we are growing slowly but surely every week. Currently have 42 registered members. During the pandemic, our capacity is 60, and our average daily attendance is just about 20 kids a day right now. So we've had a great few months. We look forward to serving more youth and becoming a bigger part of the community. Santa Cruz Elementary School is obviously our first club, and I promised Principal Reinhardt that it would always be my favorite Maricopa club, but we're going to open more. Maricopa has as many students as Casa Grande does, and as I mentioned earlier, we have four clubs there. So as we can develop partnerships and relationships here in Maricopa, we're going to open more clubs and be available to every young person in this community. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've enjoyed visiting with many of you. As we talked about the last month, being very busy, enjoyed spending time with those of you I was able to at these events, and look forward to meeting the others and spending more time there. As you are comfortable, we would love to invite you all to come over to Santa Cruz sometime for a club tour. So thank you again. We look forward to working with you and being a big part of this community moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that concludes the report from the mayor and city council. That'll take us to the report from the city manager. Nothing from the city manager at this time. Thank you. That'll then move us to the call to the public. At this time, I'd like to invite up, have one speaker card, let them go first, and then anyone else that wishes to approach the podium may do so. Let's see, Ladonda Dees? Ladonda, would you come on forward here and tell us what's on your mind? We'll give you about three minutes to do so.
Hello, I am Ladonda Dees. I'm with Buff City Soap. I've lived in Maricopa since 2012. I did have a choice on where to put the first Buff City Soap, and I chose Maricopa, because why not, right? I was going to drag my husband up here, but I left him in the back. So we do own the shop out here. We make handmade- but I left him in the back. So, um, we do own the shop out here. We make handmade soaps. It's all plant-based. There's no harsh chemicals. I would like to invite all of you, everyone in this room, to come on Saturday to our ribbon cutting. It's going to be at 10 a.m. So we're finally getting that ribbon cutting. Very excited. There will be a DJ, um, and lots of soap. So, uh, we will be handing out lots of, uh, different prizes as well and opportunities to even win soap for a year. So anyways, 10 a.m. Saturday. Thank you for the opportunity to speak up here.
Thank you, Ladonda. We appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. But again, the time is yours at this point. If you'd like to approach the podium, please do so. Give us your name and go from there.
Twenty-one years of boxing. Uh, I boxed longer than that. I was in the military 20 years. So it's like, uh, good evening, Mayor Price and the city council. My name is Baron McCain. Uh, I thank everybody for being here tonight. Cause, uh, councilman, uh, councilwoman, Gassy, thank you so much for our vets. Cause I've lived through that, what she's talking about. Uh, but anyway, let me say, I was actually learned how to, I love city of Maricopa because I, I learned how to walk here. My, my, my grandmother taught for 35 years in, in city of Maricopa. So, uh, actually, and my mom, she was a teacher just like my grandmother. Uh, she was from Louisiana, but her, her, her main name was King. So that's how the, it got into the family. Uh, so I'm here to, to explain that what we're going through now is, is if we don't do, as the mayor was talking about, collaboration and mediation, how unimportant is, uh, that we must be able to, what makes this country great is people, empathy and free speech. We must never forget that. And that's, uh, the voting is so important, uh, that, uh, the one thing that we need in government though is diversity. Now, race and gender is just part of diversity. My mother explained to me just how important diversity is in government to be fair to the people. Because the very fact that diversity is, is, the question is this, how can you make change with something that doesn't change? We need to address this. Cause in my family, I've already addressed this. So therefore, we can't. Not with gender, neither with race, because it never changes. So, uh, diversity is about inclusiveness in nature, not, you know, divisiveness. This country has been fine, fighting, uh, a losing battle. So that's where the collaboration comes in so important. That's why, Mayor Price, I was with you at the state meeting to make sure that 347 was funded. That's why I went to the Board of Supervisors, because this great city was, was fined $1.3 million because they increased a voter-approved tuition of CAC. We need to start working with one another rather than, uh, see, government works this way. You know, we're supposed to represent the will of the people, not against the will of the people in government. In order to do the things we need to do, we have to be working together. So therefore, it's like, I'm bringing to the city of Maricopa, because I do love the city of Maricopa, the first of its kind, a, uh, economic development project which the mayor knows about, and it's a community center right here in the city of Maricopa. Cause I love the city of Maricopa. God bless us all.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry. Appreciate it. Anyone else at this time? I'd like to approach the podium. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Thank you very much for your participation this evening. Uh, that'll take us to item seven, which is the meeting minutes. Item 7.1, uh, council, are there any additional questions or concerns? If not, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Almost.
Have a motion, Councilman Freddie, or second from Vice Mayor, second from the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the consent agenda at this time. Council, any questions on consent? Seeing none, can I go ahead and have a motion to approve the consent? We have a Councilmember Brown, who is motioned and seconded by Vice Mayor Smith. Is there any further discussion on consent? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that'll take us to the regular agenda. At this time, item 9.1 is a presentation. The mayor and city council shall hear a presentation regarding an update on truck traffic in the community. Nathan, take it away.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having us all. Um, we know that the council has heard concerns recently about a perceived increase in truck traffic and noise within city limits. So in order to best respond to these concerns, street maintenance, public services, engineering and public safety staff all looked into the topic. So this evening, I'm gonna share the results of how that looking into went. Uh, when we think of truck traffic, we probably typically think about delivery trucks. And after the overpass project was completed, we noticed that most delivery trucks were taking the route that is shown here. Um, imagine you're coming from Casa Grande, um, you would pass through Maricopa to get to Phoenix, and you would tend to travel north on Wynton Parker, turn onto Smith Anke, and then turn onto John Wayne Parkway, or continue on State Route 238 to get to Hila Bend towards San Diego. Now, as we received concerning calls about loud truck noise and traffic early in the morning, uh, staff from various, uh, city departments stood at the intersection, intersection of Porter and Smith Anke to get a better idea of just how many trucks do go by and what was their purpose? What were they doing? So these were these results. Um, as you can see here, between the hours of four and eight a.m., staff sat there and observed, um, on one particular morning, which was a weekday, uh, 174 trucks, though 50% of those came between seven and eight in the morning. Uh, the majority of these trucks were not delivery trucks or farm trucks, but they were related to construction projects here in the city. As we know, construction jobs get started early to beat the heat. Um, 70% of the trucks were tied to, 70% of the trucks were tied to construction projects, and most of the noise actually came between six and eight in the morning. So as a result of these findings, everything that summarized up there, staff understood that the truck traffic would continue as long as there are construction projects in Maricopa. So the best way to cut down on construction traffic is to stop construction. The best way to stop construction is get these things done and completed. So our job is to make sure these projects, when they come in, they work according to their timetable. We don't get in their way and let them finish quickly and efficiently. Um, that helps the economy because then after the job is done, the businesses or the homes that are going in there can get completed and people can move in. Um, changing up the preferred route that trucks would take would likely not result in any noticeable differences because construction traffic goes to wherever the construction site is, whether it's on John Wayne or Honeycutt or Bolin. So what are we going to do? Well, we have a couple solutions that we'd like to share with you this evening. First, Maricopa Police Department is going to continue to monitor the route and area to make sure speed and traffic rules are followed. Uh, during their inspection, they saw plenty of noise just by residential vehicular use. So they're going to continue to monitor this spot to make sure all traffic rules are followed. Further, the public services team has ordered six new no-engine-brakes signs that they'll put along this corridor that you see here that will, um, that they'll especially put along Smith Anke. That should cut down on any no-noise as well. When you have the signs up and you have the police presence, that typically results in changed behavior. That should improve some of these concerns that we've been receiving. So that concludes my presentation this evening. I'm here, uh, to answer any questions, and Commander Hughes is also here, uh, to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Nathan. Appreciate that. Uh, appreciate the, uh, early morning standing out there on the corner. And it's not even Winslow, Arizona, is it? So anyhow, we appreciate that, that study. Um, and council, questions at this time for Nathan on this? I know I personally have received many, uh, I wouldn't call them complaints, but concerns about, about this. So again, many thanks for this information. Um, I want to add one kind of byline to this. There was a concern dealing with construction and construction of new homes, um, going specifically through Rancho El Dorado to get to the Lakes area. Um, is that something that, you know, again, I can probably bring this up at other times, but is that something that, that we would normally do? Would we put no truck traffic through a, uh, what is still an arterial street as the loop that goes around Rancho El Dorado? Uh, or is that something that we would ever say, don't go this way, go down, you know, uh, 347 to Smith Anke and then up and then over? Uh, but clearly that's not how the GPS often sells, tells most of these folks to get there because it's not the fastest route. So can you, can you highlight on that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. If it's a trend that we're noticing with a particular construction crew, uh, with a particular job, um, it's good for us to be aware of those concerns so that we can then talk to the foremans and the other contractors there. So they can know what route we'd prefer they use. Uh, we try to stay away from residential streets as much as possible. Um, if there's doing, if they're doing work at the lakes at Rancho El Dorado, we'd like them to stay on Smith Anke until they get to their site, rather than cut through any of the other neighborhoods.
Okay.
So thank you for letting me know that. I'll pass that on to our chief building official so that we can get all of our contractors on the same page.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you very much. And again, that came from a constituent with that concern. So appreciate that answer. We'll make sure to pass that back along.
Thanks.
Anyone else at this time? Questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That was just for presentation only. Uh, next item is 9.2. This is a resolution of the mayor and city council, the city of Maricopa, Arizona, establishing the salary of the mayor and the members of the council. This is for discussion and action. And I don't know, Rick?
Yes, thank you.
Pass it to you. So if there's anyone to take it away to.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you may or may not know, the state statute allows every two years for the elected body to consider their salaries. And I wanted to take this opportunity to present my thoughts on the matter and to make a proposal for your consideration. As you know, I've been doing this for a long time in a lot of cities with a lot of different, uh, elected officials. And a lot of times we, we tend to do what we call benchmarking in government, where we compare. But the problem is we rarely compare the right dynamics. We tend to say, well, if you're a population of this, you should have so many cops, or a population that, you should have so many firefighters. And none of that's really true. You have to do an internal analysis based on what the work actually is. Cause the city can have a larger population but less police officers if crime rates are low, or vice versa, for example. Uh, so as I thought about this, and I have to admit it's somewhat selfish because for me, I, I don't think one, one probably understands what you do better than I do, the time that's put in. And I need to emphasize that there's a huge difference between those cities that were established 50, 80, 100 years ago. For one thing, they were established when rules were not what they are today. They didn't have all the enderossecrecies of law and, and science and all the things that have to be done today. And for a city that is a growth city like ours, we're still only in our second decade, the demands are different for you than they are, in my opinion, even in Phoenix. Cause in Phoenix, they're talking about maybe where the next light rail track should go, but they're not dealing with flood issues. They're not dealing with how to get water. They're not dealing with major land planning and transportation and how to get bridges built and all those type of things. Cause those were done many decades ago, and frankly, in a much easier time, when those decisions were easier made and, and done, uh, more quickly. So it's critical, from my perspective as your city manager, to have a city council who has the, uh, the time, the ability to comprehend a large volume of information on a myriad of topics that are far outside probably what you were trained for professionally. And to have that expertise is critical to getting this job done. In addition to that, I think the demands, and perhaps demands is not the right word, maybe the expectations that our electorate has on the electric officials is greater than it's ever been before. Um, you know, more and more people have interest and ideas. And I sometimes have to question when people say government doesn't listen. That may be true at the federal level. That may be true to some degree at the state level. It is certainly not true at the local level. In fact, most of all the good things that happen at the state and federal level start at some city somewhere. And frankly, you know, there's been a lot of good things started right here in this city that other cities and others have tried to emulate and do better. So as I thought about this, I thought about what are those impediments that might prevent good, qualified people for running for an elected seat? And I think there's a, a myriad of those. Part of it is you get beat up. Facebook can just tear you apart, and it doesn't matter if it's truthful or not. Doesn't matter, facts are not an issue anymore. And you, so you gotta have thick skin. So you gotta go home and boxer it till you got, put your salt, water right, toughen up that skin, you know, those type of things. Uh, but the media can really beat you up. And, and not only you, they're beating up your family and everyone else. Uh, I think another part is, you know, there's a lot of work out there with little pay and a lot of stress. If we just paid you by the stress, you'd be worth millions, you know, that you have to go through on a daily basis. And ask people to take time out of their, their private life. They take time away from their families. They take time away from their business, their employment to make this happen at the expense of maybe not making the same dollars you could otherwise. So as I think about these things, and I've thought about the needs of the city, I think size, population and future growth opportunities. The city of Maricopa has a planning area of an excess of 250 square miles. We will ultimately be, they're projecting 600. I'm gonna tell you now, it's probably gonna be closer to 800,000 by the time this ends. You'll be a larger city than most of those cities to the north of us, cause they can't grow much more, Phoenix excluded, of course. And, and the decision-making, the thought processes, Councilmember Brown talked today just about the water issues. I mean, that's just one of many, many, many issues that have to be resolved. So in essence, you're the planner, you're the engineer, you're the manager, you're the administrator, you're the finance director. You have to know all those things that we as staff members do individually and, and try to get an expertise in. So it's my recommendation that you reconsider your salaries, uh, for this, uh, which we, I think, go into effect in January, I believe is correct. Um, not only for you, but more importantly, for future opportunities for people coming forward, uh, to participate in this position. And the recommendation I have put forth is to remove, to move the mayor's salary from 23 to 35, and the council members from 18 to 23,000. Now, when you think about it, I can't, there's not a single level employee in the city that makes less. Not one. Yet, you know, and people think, oh, you just go to two meetings every, you know, every other Tuesday night. No, you're on the phone, you're on the email, you're on, you stopped in the grocery stores. You know, you live and breathe work in city. And frankly, I could not begin to do the job I do without you. And one of the reasons I chose to come to this city is because of you. To have a city council that is dedicated, that is willing to invest and do what you're doing, and I, I speak for our next new candidates too, in our past, is a tremendous help to me. Cause frankly, if you weren't here, I wouldn't be either. I'd go somewhere else. So I hope you would, and I know it's tough, voting for yourself to get a salary increase, but you know, you're voting for two new ones, and some of you will only be here, you know, a few more years or whatever. But I really would encourage you to strongly consider this recommendation based on the fact that our situation is somewhat unique to other cities. There are cities who pay more, there are cities that pay less, and I can make an argument using statistics to go anywhere you want to go. But from my personal opinion, as a professional of over almost 40 years now, this would be my recommendation that you, uh, consider this. And one thing I did not put in my report, I would like to add at this time, frankly, I think you should consider a, um, whatever the percentage of increase that is given to the general city employees every year should be automatic for you. Now admittedly, 2% or 3% on top of the minimal salaries, you know, might buy you another Frosty. But you get another Frosty. So after that midnight meeting, you get a hundred bucks on the way home and, and get that Frosty. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Uh, and then we go from there.
Thank you, city manager. We appreciate that explanation and for the, uh, outlay of the topic item. Uh, before we go any further, I do have a speaker card for Brian Ott, who wanted to speak on this subject. So Brian, would you please come forward and, uh, give us just a few minutes of thoughts on your mind here?
Mayor, council, staff, guests, thank you. Appreciate the time. Um, having been in your position once myself for almost 12 years and also a county, you call them a commissioner here. here, I was a county council member up in Pierce County in Tacoma. There's always one that's gotta do this. And I'm sorry, it's me, but I think 30% is a little excessive. And first of all, I do want to commit, I did find, I did know that during the recession, you voted to decrease your salaries. That is commendable. It really is. I have to say that's commendable. And then you increased it back to 18,000 in 2017, I believe. A 52% increase for the mayor, wow, that's got to be hard to vote that for yourself. But, and I was also, the county, the city I was a council member in, we had our own water, we had our own electric. And as a council member, I have to give it to you, the most important thing you have is vision. That has got to be the hardest thing. I don't care what anyone says, but vision is it. To have a vision for a city out 20 to 30 years, that takes a lot. But all in all, I'm up here to say that I think 30% is a little excessive. I'm sorry to say that, but I think even if you gave yourself 15%, I think that would be agreeable to the public. And if you could do 10%, because obviously, what happened was you didn't have a pay raise from 2017. I went almost 10 years without a salary increase as a council member. But for yourselves, I would say, if you could just bring it down a little, I think it would be, I know, I don't really have the answer. I wouldn't want to be in your position this evening. But I would say, if you could, I believe the city manager said you could automatically put it in to have a certain percentage every year. So obviously, if you would have given yourselves a 10% increase every year, you would be up to where you would want to be this time, at this year. Anyway, if you went 15, I think that's doable. But I just, I just wanted to put my two cents in this evening. That's all I wanted to do. And like I said, I respect all of you for your time, and I respect your vision that you have for this city. Obviously, it's, I commend, I really commend, Maricopa is quite the city. In the last 10 years, I have to say, you've done well. But I have to be the one who tells you, bring it down just a bit. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate it. So council, I'll turn it over to you and start with Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you to the speaker. So I'm a numbers cruncher, and I took the comparative data that was given to us that compares us to other cities that are similar. But there's not one city really that I would say, and I guess I'm not an expert, but there's not one city in the comparison that I feel is growing at the rate that the city of Maricopa is growing at, and the complexity of things that we're looking at. Many of the cities that are in our comparison have been around for quite a while. But anyway, to give you an idea of my number crunching, if I looked at the averages of the information that we were given, and I then applied a complexity factor, I think I come pretty close to your numbers. I could see city council being increased to 20 or 20.5 in that ballpark range. And then I could see the mayor going, the mayor's salary was very interested in number crunching in terms of the fact that many of the cities that we were compared to, the mayor does make significantly more. So I could see with the complexity factor and the averaging, looking at a salary increase to 30,000. And Mayor, I am ready for a motion when you're ready to, I would like to make that motion. And then I would also like to pursue the cost of living.
Thank you for comments. Councilwoman Gessi.
This decision was made prior, for me, getting elected in 2016, that the council then decided to give the increase. So I benefited from the increase, and now it's going to be the other way around. I won't benefit from the increase, but I still have, I'm going to say what I said then, I'm gonna say it now. I feel uneasy when the council gives their own salary increases. And the state legislators have gone out, that I could remember twice, for a pay increase of their own, and both times, the public had said no to them. So I feel uneasy not having a board, not having a committee, not having public input. Thank you for speaking up. I feel uneasy, this group, to give themselves a raise. And I commend you with what you had mentioned. I think that you're top-notch, as far as city managers are concerned. I was part of the city. I worked for the city of Maricopa. In 2009, I was laid off. That's when I decided to run for city council. And I commend the council then, and I think Marvin Brown, you were the only council member then. We went through layoffs, we laid off city employees. I was one of the city employees that was laid off. But the council also took into consideration that they needed to decrease their pay as well. We don't know what the future holds with COVID situations. There are businesses going under. There are, unemployment rate is gone, has gone up tremendously. We do not know what the future holds. So I feel very uneasy for this council to give themselves a raise at this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else at this time?
I don't think you had.
Councilmember Brown.
I have lived through the lean periods when we had no chicken, just the bones. And now we have turkey and prime ribs and everything, which is delicious. And jury is correct. We voluntarily reduced our salary down to 7,500 for two years, which made absolutely no sense. But we did it. I really, given the formula, I haven't checked as closely as Nancy's checked in terms, nor has Ricky, but 23 for council and 35 for mayor, I don't think is that far out of line. But I would, if we're gonna go 35,000 for the mayor, I would eliminate the mileage since you do drive a city car. That's $6,000 right there. It's added to your salary since 2017. So I would support city manager's recommendation with the proviso that you eliminate that mileage for you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anything others, please. Councilman Wade, Councilman Videlo.
We don't do this for the salary. The salary is what's there because we're, because it's there, not because we come here every day and spend eight to 12 hours a day in our office trying to support the city that supports us. Now, am I going to say that I don't want to be paid for my time and my effort? No, that's not what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting is if we're doing a good job for the city, if we're doing a good job for each other, then compensation packages there should be respected, as well as any adjustments that make common sense. I think what Nancy has proposed is a pretty common sense suggestion and recommendation or alternative to that. I believe that we should be, it should be recognized, as the city manager pointed out, the complexity of the job, the complexity of the task, of building a brand-new city, bringing it up from the ground, and supporting everything that goes along with it. I respect the hours and the time that the mayor puts in. I respect the hours and the time that my fellow council members put in, and the time they spend away from their families, the things we do on Sundays and Friday nights and Wednesday afternoons where we are away from our families. I think that that should be respected and taken into consideration. Should we get paid for that? That's not why we're here. But if the salary is there, then I think that we should receive that salary because it was put before us. I think 35 is a little high for the mayor. I also think 23 is a little high for us as council members. So again, I recognize the need to move forward with a pay increase because of the time and effort we put into it. But I like the alternative that was presented to us. So given the opportunity, that would be the direction that I would go in.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Videlo.
The two years that I've served, spent a lot of time with everybody up here. I know everybody's time is valuable, and it gets really difficult to put a number on that. Like Henry said, we don't do it for the pay. Private sector, we can go out and make a heck of a lot more money. We do it for the passion of this city. I know when I walk through a grocery store or a store, I may take an hour, two hours to get a gallon of milk or, you know, just shop. My wife doesn't shop with me anymore. She's tired of it. She says, let's go out of town to shop. I'm here to serve, and everyone up here is here to serve. And the financial gain that we get, which is obviously below minimum wage, comments that our city manager made, that there's no employee in this city that makes less than us. We also have campaigns that we spend our money on. I spend about $8,000 to $10,000 on my campaigns. I don't get a dime back. That's perfectly fine because I chose that. I hear people say, well, you took this job. There are jobs that I take just because I love doing them. Our own job now today, I make a lot less than I've ever had. But I do it for the passion of doing what I love to do. And that serves people. So when I look at all the time that the mayor spends driving, a couple of years ago, I believe he had an accident, and that came out of his pocket, if I remember correctly, I'll let him tell that story. The financial strain was on himself. The financial strain was on his family not having a second car. So when I look at ourselves, and then I look at the mayor, plus the person whoever decides to fill his shoes, that the expectation is going to be pretty high. And again, we are talking about something in the future here. Again, we have, we had great candidates who ran. They didn't run for the financial side of it. Then that won. They chose to do it regardless of what the pay was. And I myself feel that taking away especially the mayor's car allowance, financially, a burden on himself. And the amount of miles that he does is absolutely tremendous. All weekend, I was trying to call him, and he was working on a prior meeting that we just had. Over and over again, I got a text back, I'll call you back, I'll call you back. Tell you about what that was. He spends hours upon hours for this city, and he loves every minute of it. He spends hours on Facebook. You all know that. So what have the council decides for ourselves? The one salary that I really seriously consider is, these past years that he has been mayor, he has put in much more than $35,000 would ever, ever repay. It's time from his children, his time from his family, his vacation time, which very rarely he took. Okay, I apologize, COVID made you go on a vacation. But my point being is that the effort that he puts into this is miniscule to our budget. I feel that taking anything away from that particular, and again, future too, because again, we want to attract, whether it's anybody up here in the future who wants to be mayor, think of the burden this would put on you have to take away your salary that you work for today, and then put on a $35,000 a year salary. Go live on that. Family of four, five, I should say. So whatever we decide for ourselves, I think we should seriously consider the amount of time effort that our mayor puts in for this city for us, and every single one of us. So I hope we can reconsider that particular one. If we do something on ourselves, then so be it. But that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Videlo. And then we'll go to Councilwoman Gessi.
I'm sorry.
Looking at him, I answered you. Sorry, Man Freddy, my apologies.
Nancy, can you repeat what you said earlier before about your plan or whatever it was, your proposition?
Yes, sure.
I missed part of it.
Yes. So completely based on averages first, and then I added a complexity factor. I think that the council salary should be submitted at, or proposed at 20.5, and the mayor's salary at 30,000. And I want to, since you gave me the floor, I want to, I'll give it back to you. I wanted to put a couple more points of reference in there to help people understand, there are expenses of being a city council member that aren't covered by anything that the city pays out. Let me just give you a couple examples, because I always speak from the heart. But we, there was a time when I was a single mom. And so if I had been a single mom at the time that I became a city council member, I would have had to pay for a babysitter. And so that might be a cost that I have to put out. Now, I do that knowing that I have children and I'm running. But hopefully, the value that I add to the city outweighs for the residents the fact that maybe there should be a, based on comparison, a change in the salary. So I worry about any single parent out there, whether they be male or female, and wanting to apply, actually run for city council. And I don't want to stop them. If there's a good candidate out there, I don't want to stop them because they can't afford to pay for childcare. That's just an example. Another example is, we had a person on city council who had their parents at home. And so for them to be at city council, they had to hire a caretaker. So that's another expense. And they don't expect reimbursement, and they understand it's part of being a servant. But those are just things that come to my mind from the heart in terms of making sure that we have quality candidates. And in looking at the data, it is really obvious that we do need to make a change in comparison to all the cities that we looked at. And then when you add the complexity factor, it just makes sense. But that was a long-winded answer to your question.
I feel your pain. I can't tell you how many baseball games I missed for being here, and so many family events that I missed for being here. I just wanted to piggyback on some of the comments that we've already made. Five of us up here have full-time jobs. So this is our part-time job. Take that into consideration as well. We don't do this for the money. You had mentioned that. I don't think any of you do it for the money because you could be doing something different. I just wanted to put the dollars in perspective. We do get paid $18,000 of city council pay. We do get paid $900 a year for our cell phone reimbursement, for those of us that receive it. And we do get paid $1,200 of auto allowance a year for a total of $20,100. But then we also get paid our benefits, which is for being a city employee, you also get healthcare benefits. For me, my category, I receive $14,000. So at the end, I receive about $34,000 in benefits and salary. And that's not including the HSA, that's another $1,200. So in perspective, I get paid $35,000. That's how much the city costs to have me on the city council. So that's not taken into consideration some of the other benefits, Copper Sky that we get. We get other benefits that are included in this. And when I had approached the mayor a couple of years ago on my concern of a fellow council member working a full-time position where he was benefiting from market dollars that went to his business because he just so happened to own the business. And when I had made that comment to the mayor, you had said to me, that person has a right to provide for their family, and therefore, he had this full-time job. And I completely agree. And that's, oh, you, of course, who I'm talking about. I completely agree. But you also mentioned to me, this is, after all, this is a part-time job. I want you to consider that. This is a part-time job. What other part-time job would pay you in benefits? $35,200. Sure, I make more in my city pay. The last two transactions that I did in real estate, I made more than I make all year on city council. You're absolutely right. We don't get paid what we're worth. If I could make that, and as a realtor in two transactions, that's, we're not getting paid what we should be getting paid. But at the same time, I want you to take into consideration, we don't know what the future holds, and we have so many businesses going under because of this whole pandemic. If you want to believe that this was a made-up situation, then maybe that this is not, nothing's going to happen because of it. nothing's going to happen because of it. But if it is true, and more businesses are going to have to go down on lockdown and lose money, I think it's unfair for us to give, well, once again, I'm the minority here. I'm not going to benefit from it. I just think it's unfair to give yourself a raise right now when we have the unknown around the corner.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Back to Councilwoman Freddie. You didn't really get a chance to answer if you wanted to say something.
Okay, you're good? Okay. I'll take a turn here. So, you know, this is, yeah, to Mr. Ott's comments, it is, it's a terrible position to be in. Nobody likes to be in this position. But, you know, at the same time, I hear all the arguments that are being made. And, you know, I don't disagree with a lot of them. They are strong arguments. And that's the challenge with the gray area of politics, is that you can, you can make an argument either way, on either side, for either reason. And so I guess it just depends on where you come down, based on the belief system, that you're trying to do the best thing for the city and for its future. You know, I want to hit a few points that have been made. You know, it is hard to compare apples to apples. When, you know, just like the city manager said, there's so many other reasons and ways in which you can make comparisons. You can make those comparisons based on population, based on growth, based on work ethic, based on anything. And you can come down on any of those sides, and just like the city manager said, you can make an argument for anything. And I know all of us have been doing this long enough that we could too. But at the same time, none of us are in this for the money. But yet, you still have to feed your family. And, you know, at the end of the day, we talk about this being a part-time job. I was once counseled as I ran for this position. Be careful, because it will take as much as you want to give to it, and then more. And I came to realize, boy, is that a true statement. And maybe it's personal, maybe it's on your family, maybe it's on your marriage, maybe it's on your finances, maybe it's on your business. It will keep taking, and you have to decide how much you're willing to give to it. As you all know, I've decided that, from my choice, that I decided to answer the call of what I feel is the public. And that is, is they demand full-time results, and so I give them full-time. It may be stipulated as a part-time job in this code, but I give them full-time, and I give them more than that. I work about 60 hours plus a week. You know, I think it's hard to compare fairness, and I also think it's hard to compare percentages. You know, you can't eat percentages. You can only eat dollars, right? Dollars are what buy you the food to put on your table. And at the same time, the percentages are difficult, because there's not a lot of people out there. In our state, in the state of Arizona, the council can only give the next council a raise. Now, while some of these council members may be here for the next council, after the swearing-in on December 1st, the reality is, is you can't give this council a raise. You give the next council a raise. And so you can only do that so many times. Now, it's true, you can stipulate it in there as a percentage of a raise. That could happen every year, and I think that is a good idea. I think that tying it to kind of the average or what the employees get is a good idea. And that was kind of the reasoning and rationale by which, you know, two members of this council, or at least one member of this council that was on at that time when we did do that decreases, because there were many layoffs going. And that is always possible. You can't go up, but you can go down. And I think that's also an important notification that we can make, that you can do that in between years, right? So if there was a bad year, so to the argument of we don't know what the future holds, that's true. But if there's a bad year, you can absolutely decide to take less that year. You can do that. You just can't raise it, right? Because you can't raise your salary. You raise the next council's salary. So I think that that argument is, you know, kind of a counter to it. The other side to this has been mentioned, the amount of, you know, things that are taken. Right before I was elected, this city council decided to make a stipulation that they would take away mileage reimbursement and add a car allowance. And I think that was a wise move to some extent, because I calculated out that, on average, I drive about 4,000 miles a month for the city. I was doing it in my personal car for the first seven, well, six years. Six years I was the mayor. At 4,000 miles a month, at the IRS rate of 57.5 cents per mile, that's about $26,000, $27,600 that this city would, should have written me a check for. Now, that's a chunk of change. But at the same time, I was also on city business one day, and I was hit while in my car, and it was a hit-and-run. So guess who got to bear the brunt of that, too? The city didn't fund my insurance increases, didn't repair my car, didn't deal with the car that I was without. I got to fund that as well. Now, I think that there is a certain amount, when we ask our employees to go places, we don't let them go in their personal cars, because that's against the liability policy. But by golly, we ask it of our council members. And I think that that's a bit of a stretch. So, you know, I want to be transparent, and I want to be honest here, but I also want it for some reconsideration by this council. I was very pleased and appreciative when the council, about three years ago, decided that they would change, I guess, four years ago, maybe, that they would change this to be a larger stipend than what I got. I got 200. They raised it 300, so it's 500. About a year and a half ago, the city manager recognized that I was driving far more than many of his directors, and that he said, you know, this probably makes sense that we assign you a city car. And so while, as you know, I have fought for the fleet to be enlarged here in the city because of the need that we have, we also have a need by which other cities are able to do their job, where they're not putting their personal vehicles and their personal liability at risk. And so we created the standard by which we have today. And all of you are able to take city cars and have your stipends as well. You just drive a lot less than I do, because I go to all these meetings, because that's what I committed to the city and to each of you. And that's part and parcel. Again, I don't make decisions by myself. This is a collective group. But at the same time, it is by which we are able to continue to be represented and to move things forward, bring it back to the city manager, bring it back to staff, move things that eventually elevate to us. And so these are things that are being done. So I want to be transparent here, but I also want some reconsideration, or I would ask for reconsideration here, is that, you know, to the point that the vice mayor was making, Queen Creek has $37,000 on its mayor's position, and we're bigger than they are. Again, it's hard to compare, right, apples to apples, but we are absolutely their biggest competitor. When we lost the Home Depot that was, the Lowe's that was coming here, they went to Queen Creek. They are growing every bit as fast as us, because they kind of have a leg in both sides, right? They straddle the Pinal County line, they straddle the Maricopa County line, and they sit tucked in there and nestled with Gilbert and Mesa. And so, and then Santana on their south, which is unincorporated. And so they are growing at an astronomical rate. And so they understand and see similarities to what we do. But I also think that it would be, it would not be transparent if, under the auspice of using a city vehicle at my disposal, that that 500 stay, as, you know, Councilmember Brown has stated. But by the same token, if we take $6,000 away from the compensation, then what is the raise that we are proposing? The proposal is almost nothing. It's $1,000. And is that the raise we were trying to give? So I think that what I would prefer is that we take that away, stipulate in the resolution, the use of a city vehicle, take away the stipend, but then add it to the other side of the ledger. And so basically, and I would be, you know, willing to, it's whatever you all decide, but I'm just proposing this, that in removal of that, so that it's clean and it's clear, and that it's not something that keeps being brought up and, you know, beats any of us over the head with it, but rather, again, transparent and proposed by resolution, that if we then said, okay, well, then adding it to the other side of the ledger, instead of being 36, make it 35, and therefore, take it away the 500 and 6,000, right? So again, you're looking at a net increase of, what, am I doing my math right? 4,000, right, is an increase? Because again, you're taking away six.
Did you say 29?
Yeah. Six. Right. So it's a net, right. 29, right. So 35, so that's six. So it's a net six, right? So that's, that way, it's net six, but yet it adds it to the other side of the ledger, takes it out of there, so there's not any of the confusion or issues on the issue of a stipend, and therefore, it just puts it out there as an acceptable measure. So that's a proposal that I would suggest, so that way, it's fair there. Unless, of course, you see that it's fair, that it's flat-out removed. That's entirely up to you. But if that's the case, then again, the net increase is $1,000. And if that's what is your intention, so be it. I'm thankful. But if it wasn't your intention, then I would say that you please review it. It is a hard gig to raise somebody else's salary, a seat that you sit in now. Sometimes I wish that wasn't the case, but again, I think that moving forward and trying to lead here is that I think the work that we've put in speaks for itself. And I think that the work that each of us, this is not, this is not a job. It's a lifestyle. None of you go to the store without being in there for three and four hours. You never get away from it. You know, my time on Facebook is not scrolling through things. It's answering questions. You know, I only use my personal profile for the city. That's all I've ever used it for. And so it's answering questions and meeting people where they're at. And I think many of you do the exact same thing. So I think that, you know, it's a fair proposition. Again, I can be argued down any way, shape, or form from anyone that wants to. But I think that, you know, to the point by which, and I'm not being discriminatory or negative here, but you guys are running a multimillion-dollar corporation, somewhere in the neighborhood of $150 to $250 million. You work 40 to 60 hours a week. You attend more meetings and more constituent things than anybody else realizes. And yet, you make less than the front desk person who sits out there. And yet, you're expected to know everything that Rick talked about. Water is one of the most complex issues. Councilman Brown's going to be a hard person to replace, because water is one of the most complex issues in the state of Arizona. And he's been working on it for 12 years, intimately involved with it. And yet, that's only one thing. He's expected to be a financial guru. He's expected to know everything there is to know about police, everything there is to know about fire, everything there is to know about engineering, and permitting, and building companies, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't mean to be long-winded, but I do mean to outlay the arguments that we really do have to consider on, is this leadership that we wish to showcase? And we can argue leadership is not taking this effort. But if we're going to do it, then let's do it where we're in that comparison level, and let's do it so it's fair and transparent. And that's my ask of you. So I leave it with you.
I'd go back to you, Vice Mayor, as you wanted to make a motion. But again, certainly allow that motion, and however you wish to play it, or if there's more discussion that wishes to be involved, Councilwoman Freddie has a piece she'd like to say.
What are the current salaries again? I know mine's 18. Yours is what? 23 for him? And the proposals go to 35 and 23? Right. So I like what you guys are saying. It's fun. You move some of that stuff up, move that over there. My proposal, then, is to take away the 6K in the $500 a month from the mayor, drop the council down to 22 instead of 23, give the mayor that five or that six to make up the difference. That way, it's the same budget numbers we were talking about before we start. The council wouldn't get a $23,000 raise. They'd get $22,000 up to it. Mayor would go from that to, what is that, 41? And we're done. I mean, I also would like to say...
It wouldn't go to 41, because you're taking away six. It would be 35.
What?
35. It would be 35.
No, we're already saying 35.
Say 35, because you take away the six.
Right. So we get them to 41, but the six is moved over to the other section instead.
No, I was, I mean, sure, who's going to say no, right? No, I mean, what I was proposing is, based on the initial indication to reduce, right, based on the 35 proposed, then if you take 35 and reduce it to 30, and take six away from that...
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, take 35, take the six for the car allowance, flop it over the salary. Now it's at 41. Council members at 22.
And I'm saying, I'm saying, don't do that. And the reason is, is because I'm saying, put the car in there and take away the allowance altogether.
I was just trying to look out for a moment.
So that that side is leaving the car allowance side of the ledger and moving to the compensation side.
What is, this is basic.
Councilmember, what are you proposing as your base salary?
I would propose, take the salary, take the car allowance away from the mayor. Now he makes $35,000, no car allowance. Makes sense? Then take the car allowance that he used to make, put it onto his salary. Simple. Now his salary's 41. Sense? So far? And drop the council members from 23 to 22. That's the 6,000. The budget numbers are exactly the same as we started with in the beginning. Then, instead of having it all happen in one year, just put it over two years, and we can cancel the second increase if COVID seems to be flying out of control. We can say, whoop, forget it. Don't put it in. So next January, we get the other half. So if we're going from 18 to 22, that's $4,000. This year, we get two. Next year, we get two. Simple.
Well, I would, I would, listening to Freddie about figures, to, take lessons.
Councilmember, can you speak into the microphone?
Can you hear me out there? Barry, can you hear me? All right. Well, I was saying that Mrs. Smith's proposal, the $25,000 for council, 30 for mayor, and give you back the mileage would be, since you're 36.
Up to you.
Yeah, okay. So let me give you a few more numbers. Because I am uncomfortable, 22K for city council would be a 22% increase. I am uncomfortable with that amount. What I proposed was 20.5, which would be a 14% increase. And then, let me give you some numbers for mayor, with a 15% increase, and the 6K rolled over to salary, you'd be at 32.5. With a 20% increase, and the 6K rolled over, you'd be at 33.6. I'm more comfortable with the 15 or the 20 for the mayor and 14 for the city council. So my proposal would be 20.5 for city council, and I could go up to the 20% for mayor at 33.6.
What is the industry, what is the standard that you're coming up with?
What is the averages of the industry standard that you're determining?
Averages, and keep in mind, this doesn't include the car allowance, these averages. So for mayor, it was 30, and for city council, it was 20.5. That was my average.
So we're well below the industry standard, then? For your second proposal, we're well below the industry standard.
For mayor?
Yes.
Well below, you mean because of the car allowance?
Yes.
You could still do the 30 and then leave it as car allowance, because you want to compare apples to apples.
I just want to echo, though, that I think that, and again, this is weird arguing against yourself, but, again, to Mr. Ott's perspective. But again, I think that in order to be as clean as possible, I think, you know, again, what I'm asking for, what I'm proposing, is that you eliminate the car allowance for the mayor altogether. It's only, it's only right from a transparency standpoint, but the allowance can be given in another way. In other words, you know, if the purpose is to talk about an increase here, then taking that increase and then immediately socking something away, you know, taking that away, it's really not an increase, right? So my suggestion is, is by moving it to the other side of the ledger, and just calling it straight compensation rather than a car allowance. But then again, based on what the city manager has recognized and understood, if, you know, because of the amount that I drive in this position on behalf of the city, it leaves it as a portion in the resolution by which it says the mayor shall have access and utilize the city vehicle. So again, I'm not using a city vehicle and getting a car allowance. Does that make sense? But I am getting it on the compensation side, which ultimately is the net. The net is what's important, right? Net is what you take home. Net is what you eat. And so that's where I'm saying that I think that it's really important to be very clear on that for the public, so that it is not looking like there's a double dip, so to speak.
Right. So mayor, if I take your proposed 35 and remove the 6,000, we're at 29,000. And if I take that increase over the 23, that's a 39% increase. I guess I'm uncomfortable with the 39%.
Okay, but again, I guess you're having to, if you're calculating those numbers, that increase is not the true increase of that, because the car allowance was already in existence.
No, no, no. I removed the car allowance.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I removed the car allowance, and it equates... So, okay, so I used your number, 35, minus the 6,000 takes me to 29. And if I calculate the difference between that and 23, I end up with a 39% increase for the salary portion and then you would add on the 6,000. So I'm trying to do apples to apples in terms of what the comparison data was.
Okay, so what is, I guess it would be easier if you could share your final number.
Okay.
And just, just for the purpose of everybody, because at some point, if you're going to make a motion, everybody's going to have to know what they're either seconding and voting on or not voting on or whatever.
Okay, so I'll be specific. My motion is to approve a salary increase of 20% for the mayor, which along with the car allowance moved over to salary and removed from car allowance, would make the increase And for council, a 14% increase, making the salary move from 18 to 20.5. And then my motion would also include, because definitely with the council salary, we would have been close to fine in terms of industry standard had we had the cost of living. And so I would like to add to the motion that we put in place a cost of living and that removes the problem for the most part. And if it doesn't, if things get out of sync again, we can always talk about it. Now, the mayor's salary was significantly different, so that's why I'm willing to go up to 20% and I feel comfortable with that. So that's my motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, when you say cost of living, I know a couple of years ago when we discussed this, we were just going to have it tied to whatever the increase of the employee salary was. And so I just want to clarify that.
Same thing, yes.
Okay. And before that motion is final, again, would you consider, again, putting, because of the removal of the car allowance, therefore there has to be something given on the other side, would you amend that motion or put that motion in to say that the use of a city car is there?
Yes.
So that that way, it's straight across?
Absolutely, thank you. Absolutely. So I would add to my motion that the mayor has the use of a city car.
Okay. So there is a motion. Is there a second? Second from Councilmember Wade. Is there further discussion at this time?
I just wanted to add, I think, I think Councilmember Manfredi had a point. I mean, if, given that COVID is in a situation, why not put in there in two years, you automatically receive a $2,000 raise if that's not an issue? And then you could determine that two years from now. I mean, I mean, you're going to determine that two years from now regardless, but you could put it on there. And I'm willing, I agree with your consensus. You all do, you all do do more work than, than what you're paid for, but I just, my concern is just that, is what I've said before when I came on to this council and I received the raise, when I had nothing to do with it. I still believe that the people should have a say in this, just like the people have a say in the state senators, the state representatives, they have a say. And in the last two, I want to say about four to six years, they've gone after two raises and both times they've been denied, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Well, there is a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further ideas or?
I don't know.
So my motion was for the mayor, a 20% increase, also including moving the 6,000 from car allowance to salary, which makes the number 33,600. And then for city council, a 14% increase, making the council salary at 20.5. And the motion would include a cost of living being added to our city code. Is that how it works?
May I suggest we not use cost of living, just say equivalent to that, given to the general employees and include the use of a car by the mayor.
And it includes the use of a car for the mayor.
20,500.
Are you still a second to that? Okay, because we were just restating. So a motion, a second. Extra commentary, is there any further commentary? All right, with that, let's move to a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Vidiallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Manfredi?
I'm still trying to think of the numbers for a second. Just pass.
Councilwoman Gussie?
No.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Back to me, right?
Yep.
It's, I'm choking on it a little bit, really, I am. I would prefer if we actually spread over two years, but, yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for your discussion and for your participation and thank you for the audience for sticking around and listening to us. Prada Long, we appreciate it. Again, we will adjourn this meeting here with the next meeting being on December 1st wherein we will say goodbye to a few of our council members and say hello to new ones. And so again, many thanks. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Someone?
There's a motion, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Vidiallo. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much.